Welcome to the 2022 School District of Fort Atkinson Board of Education Candidates Forum. It will include commentary and responses to questions from four candidates who are running for two open seats on the district's board. Voters will find the names of these candidates April 5th on the ballot. Candidates are elected to three-year terms. Our candidates include Sam Lamuro, Matt Loop, Christopher Rogers, and Robin Selly. Two incumbents, Mark Chaney and Adam Paul, filed papers for non-candidacy last November. The two top vote-getters from our field of four will win seats in April. During our forum, each candidate will be allowed two minutes to make an opening statement, and two minutes will be allotted to answer each of several questions. Our questions developed by the journalists at Fort Atkinson online. Our questions have not been shared with the candidates in advance at a forum. Candidates will be allowed two minutes for a final thought. Our forum is sponsored by nonprofit and nonpartisan groups, the Hord Historical Museum, and the American Association of University Women, and the Bridge located next to Good to Go in downtown Fort Atkinson. I'm Michael Klisch, and I'll be your moderator for this event. Joining us, challenger candidate Christopher Rogers. Hello, Chris.
Hi, Michael.
Start with your opening statement.
Yes. My name is Chris Rogers, as Mike just said, and I'm running for a position on the school board of Fort Atkinson. The reason I'm running is very simple. I strongly believe that we need to maintain the high quality of education for our students. Quite frankly, I see that being problematic from outside influences and people with political agendas. If I'm elected, I will resist those influences and base my decisions solely on what's best for the children.
Thank you, Chris. We're going to start with a big one. What do you feel are the biggest issues facing the school district today?
Well, Michael, I'm going to assume that COVID is on its way out, won't come back. That may be wishful thinking, but that's my assumption. The next thing that concerns me the most is, quite frankly, the financial pressures on the school district. I've gone to many of the annual meetings where they go over the budget, and they've been able to do a wonderful balancing act of keeping the revenues sufficient to support all our programs. I fear that with expanded vouchers and inflation and other factors, that we're going to have problems there. And hopefully, we can keep the high quality of education without cutting enrichment programs, but we'll have to see. We're going to have to be very astute.
Financing and budgets. Looking ahead, if elected, how would you guide the district's budget and make decisions about future operational and capital improvement spending?
Well, I think we're going to have to make capital improvements. I've toured the elementary schools. I think they're in good shape. I think the high school's in good shape, but the middle school, I toured that recently, and I think that has outlived its useful life. So, we're going to have to build probably a new middle school. No one likes to hear that, but I think that's a necessity. Fortunately, because of stupid planning by the district, I believe the loans for the building of the high school has been paid off or will be paid off in the near future, and other loans have been paid. So, I think we will have the capacity to borrow money and build that new school.
Looking a little more closely at capital improvements, the district has advanced plans to improve the buildings with an eye towards a new middle school. What do you think of the plans?
I think, I read the strategic plans. I basically am in favor of it. As I said before, I really think the elementary schools are okay. It's the middle school that we need to focus on.
Indeed. There'll be a referendum on the April ballot for the city. How do you feel about putting a referendum for the school district on the November ballot?
I haven't closely looked at our budget to see how it's progressing, but as I said before, I think all decisions like that have to be based on what's best for our students. And if we need to do it, we need to do it.
As you said, something's got to be done. If the referendum either fails or doesn't get on the budget, what do you think will need to be done?
You have to cut enrichment programs. You have to keep the core education programs, but otherwise, you have to cut, and that would be a tragedy. That's what I know in my own experience. Programs like athletics and music and things like that are the things I remember the most looking back upon my high school career, which was a long time ago, by the way.
Yeah. The district has set a goal to increase enrollment. What do you think, how do you think that could be best achieved?
Providing a quality education. I mean, people talk. The enrichment programs I mentioned just a while ago, that attracts students as well and families. That's how you have to do it. As you know, Michael, people can move from district to district, and the way to get them here is to make them want to come here.
The district's also set a goal of bringing all of its buildings to the level of exceeds expectations on the state school report card. What needs to happen to achieve that goal?
Win the lottery, maybe? No.
I didn't even know they were buying tickets.
I don't think I can answer that question right now. I think we need to focus on the middle school, and once we get that completed, then let's expand our search.
COVID-19, as you mentioned, a lot of steps taken by the district. It's been a subject of contention in the district and everywhere else for that matter. How do you think the district handled it?
I think they did it very well. I mean, let's not kid ourselves. The level of education, the quality of education probably went down when they were having virtual classes, but I think that's the best they could have done in a very bad situation.
Do you think, or do you believe that steps should be taken to reunite the district's stakeholders in light of emotionally charged issues of the last year? And if so, how can this district do that?
Well, we have things like the PTA, and that's usually for elementary students, but that could be expanded to include other classes and other parents.
Teacher retention, and that's another issue that's a problem everywhere.
Big problem.
Yeah. It's been a source of concern, certainly. How well do you think the district is doing to keep and attract more teachers, and what could be done to improve those efforts?
I'm satisfied with what the district has done to date. Talking to some of the teachers, the feeling I got is the best way to retain good teachers is make sure that the administration has their back, that they feel safe, and they aren't being pressured by outside influences on the way they teach.
What, name one thing that you think the district does very well, and another thing that could maybe use a little more attention.
Well, as I said before, I think the best thing they do is keep the budget intact. There are enormous pressures, Michael, and still, they've been able to do it. As I said before, I go to the annual meetings, and I'm amazed how they're able to do it with all the headwinds that they are encountering. What do they, what could they do better? Well, probably, we need to step up our recruitment of better teachers.
Indeed. Should you win in April for a school board meeting, where are you going to excel, and what parts of the job are you going to be challenged by?
Well, I'm going to be challenged, every board that I've ever been on has their own culture, their own ways of doing things. I'm going to be challenged by learning what that culture is and their procedures. But on the other hand, I've been around the block before. As you know, Michael, I've been the city attorney for Fort Atkinson for many years. Right now, I'm the city attorney for Jefferson, so I have a background on how government bodies like the school district operate, and I think that would make me very effective.
Indeed. Thank you, Chris. Would you like to make your closing statement?
I would. As I said before, I am, I am running for a position on the school board. People should know that I'm a lifelong resident of Fort Atkinson. I graduated from Fort High, as did my children. I think the education that I got, the quality of education, was instrumental in any success I've had in my adult life. As I just mentioned to Michael, I've been a lawyer here in the area for going on 47 years. I think that has given me insight on how to make the school board even better. But again, I'm cognizant of the challenges that we face, and all I can promise is, when I make a decision, it'll be what's best for the children and nothing else.
Christopher Rogers, thank you, Chris, for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
And good luck in April.
I didn't hear that bell at all. I don't know if that's good or bad.
It's good. With us now, challenger Robin Selly. Hello, Robin.
Hi.
Would you like to make your opening statement?
Yes, thank you. So, I'd like to thank the Fort Atkinson Online for hosting this video candidate forum, Bridge and the Hord Museum for providing the space for us to be able to film, Michael Klisch for facilitating the conversation, and the AAUW for their sponsorship. So, as you said, my name is Robin Selly, and to tell you a little bit about me, I've lived in Fort for the past 18 years. I have three children who have attended school, a school in this district since 4K. My oldest is now going to be graduating from high school. We moved here not knowing anyone. Our family lived in another, our family all lived in other, lives in other states, and my husband and I both grew up, went to college, and started our careers in other states. One of the reasons we made the intentional decision of staying in Fort Atkinson is really because of the dedication and community that we felt from the school district. As my kids have gone through school here, I always felt it was important to be involved. I've served, I've served on the PTO as a treasurer for Berry Elementary. I've chaired committees. I've been involved with attending superintendent meetings as well as community meetings, participating in district surveys and feedback groups, as well as coached volleyball. And I'm running for school board now because at this point in time, I think I could best serve the community as a school board member.
Thank you. Right off the bat, what do you see as the biggest issues facing the district?
I think the biggest issues facing the district are always student performance needs to be a top priority, and I think the social-emotional issues that we've dealt with for the last couple of years, I think, have been significant. And I think that if we can get those needs addressed, I think that that is going to always ultimately help the student performance. I also think that staff retention is an incredibly important issue. I think that we have to gain and retain great staff for our district. We have terrific staff here, but we need to be able to make sure that we are giving them the tools and the opportunities to be able to stay in the community, whether, stay in the district, whether that means it's the pay, whether that means it's the benefits. We have to look at all the different aspects of what it is that they need so that we can retain those teachers in the district. And then lastly, I think it's the learning environment. I think learning environment is an incredibly important issue. I think we need to look at the learning environments in all our schools. I think the schools have been addressing these issues and looking at it and being very strategic about it, but I think we need to recognize that the learning environment is important to the success for students.
Thank you, Robin. Financing and budgets. If elected, how would you guide the district's budget and make decisions about future operational and capital improvement spending?
Well, I think that that's, I think, yeah, the budget's incredibly important, and we have to be very responsible with the money. We have to recognize that the money needs to go so that it's supporting every student in the district, and every student is getting an equitable opportunity for the best success. So, if that means putting money into a new middle school, if that means putting money into the elementary schools as facilities, or if that means putting money into those needs for social-emotional, I think we have to balance it with making sure that student performance is, is the top priority, and whatever we are using money for is to make sure that all our students can be as successful as possible.
Thank you. Looking at the, a little more closely at the capital improvements, the district's recently advanced plans to improve its buildings with an eye towards building a new middle school. What do you think of these plans?
You know, I was given the opportunity during one of the community events to tour the middle school. I've been in the middle school many times because my youngest of three kids is an eighth grader, so I've been in the middle school plenty of times, but I've never looked at it with the eye of how does the facilitate, how does this, how does the building facilitate student learning? So, looking at it through this lens really gave me an appreciation for how we have really tried to transform what was originally built as a high school into a middle school. We've really tried to make it fit. It is a very old building. We've added on to it. We've adjusted it. We've made different modifications. I think the school district has been incredibly responsible with how it's used its buildings and how it's used its space. I've seen closets turned into bookrooms. I've seen sick rooms for kids when they're sick turned into principals' offices. So, I've seen this in facilities, and I've seen the way we've been responsible with using our space. But I think that we really need to look at the middle school very, very, in a lot of detail to recognize whether it is fiscally responsible to build new or whether it is fiscally responsible to modify what's existing. And sometimes modifying what's existing is actually more expensive and in the long run, not fiscally responsible.
There'll be a referendum on the ballot in April by the city. Do you think another referendum in November by the school district is a prudent course of action?
I think that the city and the school district are doing a lot to make sure that they are coordinating efforts in terms of, in terms of using, using space. I think that they talk a lot, however, they're two completely separate budgets. And so, unfortunately, we're at a, we're at a time where the safety referendum for the city, the need for new, the need for fire, a fire department, full-time fire department, the need for additional police officers, is coming at the same time where there's been a lot of research done. Now, there's no guarantee that there will be a referendum for the schools on the November. That hasn't been solidified. But I think that the city and the school district both, over the past X number of years, two, three years, have been doing their due diligence, looking into these issues and trying to address the issues. I think it's just coming at a head right now at the same time, unfortunately, and it's also coming at a time when we just, we've been going through a pandemic for two, three years. I don't think that could have been predicted. When they were looking at the city and the safety referendum, they were looking at this two, three years ago. They were, same thing with the middle school. They started the team looking at the committee, or the committee that was looking at the facility. They started that two, three years ago. So, everyone was trying to be very forward-thinking, and then all of a sudden, there's a lot that came up in the world. So, I think we really do have to recognize, you know, how much the community can handle at one time.
If there, well, if the referendum doesn't make it on the ballot in November, or it fails, what alternatives are there for the district?
Well, I think that the state that we're in with the way the budget works is that you have the operational referendums as one of your only avenues. I think we would need to go out and look for sponsorship. I think we would have to look very, very hard at all of our programs, and there would be some tough decisions being made in terms of what types of programs can be cut, where money can be cut in the budget. A majority of the budget is used for staff, is used for staff and benefits, and I think it would be, it would be horrible to see us losing staff, losing critical members of the team in order for us to be able to maintain the budget because we don't have the operational referendum.
And the district has set a goal to increase enrollment. How, how do you think is the best way for that goal to be achieved?
I think the district has always been really, really great at providing opportunities across the board. I know that recently, we've lost some technical education teachers, and that's been a tremendous loss for the district, and they feel it because we want to provide those different opportunities. So, we see districts across the, you know, across the country, across the state, across the country with declining enrollment. I think that the way Fort Atkinson has and continues to differentiate, differentiate itself through its music programs, its art programs, through its tech ed, through offering AP classes, a lot of AP classes. My daughter's in four of them right now. There's a tremendous offering of classes. I think that the just, the district needs to continue to have that differentiation of offering a broad swath of classes. I think that we could look at partnering with other, other locations, M A T C, Whitewater, so that we can continue to make sure that we're offering a very broad education. We want students to be able to find their passion, and their passion isn't always in the, you know, the math class, the geometry class, the, you know, freshman English class. So, I think that continuing to differentiate ourselves and keeping those programs would be really important in order to promote Fort Atkinson as well as increase our enrollment.
Not just a new middle school, but the district has set a goal to bring all of its buildings to the level of exceeds expectations on the state school report card. What do you think needs to happen to achieve that?
Well, there was a facilities advisory committee that's been put together, and that facilities advisory committee has done a very thorough job, looking at all of the buildings and all of the different facility and infrastructure needs that the buildings have. I think that that report is incredibly important because it was a cross-section of people in the community and experts in those areas, and I think that that's incredibly important for us to review that and make sure that we are using that expertise. Let's don't, let's don't do things because it's a whim, but let's also not ignore what experts are saying in terms of this is going to cost you a lot more down the road if it's not addressed now. I also think we have to, I mean, we have to look at the learning space, and we have to see if these are successful spaces for kids to achieve at their best.
Communication with stakeholders. How, how do you feel the district has been doing to achieve that?
I honestly think that within the last three to four years, the district has been doing a really great job via email, via Facebook, even when there are snow days or days that it's early, you know, early release, you can get text messages. I think if you want to be communicated with by the school district, you are going to be able to get the communications. There was a communications person hired a couple of years ago, and I think she's done a terrific job. I think there are lots of opportunities to be engaged, involved, and to know what's going on with the schools. Every school board meeting is now recorded. It's live on YouTube. You can come to it. You can watch it. You can watch the recording. You can see the meeting minutes and the meeting agenda in advance, or not the meeting minutes, but the meeting agenda and the packet in advance. I think there's lots of opportunities, however, community to the stakeholders, we have to reach them where they are because not everyone's going to read an email or not everyone's going to see it on Facebook. So, I think that you have to be able to communicate in all those different mediums to reach the maximum amount of people in the community as possible.
COVID-19. It's been two years, and it'll be longer still. How do you feel the district is handling COVID-19?
COVID-19, 19, because was it in 2019 that we first started hearing about this? Very early 2020. It has felt like a long time. I think that there have been so many ups and downs, I mean, across the world, across the country, in the community and in the district. I think the district did the best it could do with the information it had at the time. This was a brand-new issue for everyone. I think that it was an issue that no one could have foreseen, no one could have expected, no one was prepared for. The school board members are not epidemiologists, virologists, they're not medical doctors. I mean, even if they were, this is something that was so brand-new. I think that the district did a very good job. I think that they were prudent. I think that they were safe. I think that they were, I think of the utmost, they were concerned about the student and staff safety, and I would much rather be in a district that is concerned about the student and staff safety than ignoring it.
Indeed. Would you like to make your closing statement?
Yes, thank you so much. So good. Thank you so much, Michael, for hosting this candidate forum. You know, as with any school district, there will be challenges and issues facing the Fort Atkinson school district. Declining school, or just declining student enrollment, increased learning, increased learning loss and social-emotional needs, especially from the last two years of COVID, student attendance, facilities maintenance, and a forecasted budget deficit are some of the issues the district is currently facing. The district is showing that it's being innovative and strategic with its five-year plan. I appreciate this forward-thinking approach, and as a school board member, I will want to work with the district to make these strategic goals a reality. Through my education and career over the past 25 years, I've been learning, developing, and practicing the skills of critical thinking, problem-solving, strategic development and implementation. I spend a significant amount, amount of time working with teams, and I understand the necessity of communication to the stakeholders, which in this case is the community. These are all skills that will be valuable as a school board member, and I am prepared right now to put in the hard work and the time it takes to be on the school board. So, thank you.
And Robin, thank you for attending our forum, and good luck, April 6th.
Thank you very much.
We're here with challenger Sam Lamuro. Hello, Sam.
Hello, Mike.
Want to make your opening statement?
I would love to. Sam Lamuro, born and raised here in Fort Atkinson. I'm 35 currently with a husband and two lovely children. I have a daughter in third grade and a two-year-old currently. It's fun in my house, and it's spring break, so I've got a third child at the house currently. It's like a camp. I'm here because I'm looking forward to helping out the schools and making a difference in my child's lives as well as many other children's.
Thank you. We're going to start with a big one. What do you feel are the biggest issues of concern facing the school district today?
All right. So, number one, I think, would be the buildings in general. It seems the middle school is kind of falling apart, so for us, we need to kind of look at that and, and figure out what we can do to either update it, which may not be an option, as we've done through the tours and kind of found out, and may find a different site for that building as well. Kids deserve to have a safe environment to learn and to make friends and do all those other things, so if a building's not up to code, it's not up to code, and we need to make sure that they have that available. Another one, obviously, is the health of our students and being an infection preventionist that's near and dear to my heart. This whole COVID thing has, has driven the responses we do for pandemics, let alone the future pandemics that I'm sure we are going to have. Those are two big ones that I can think of.
Looking a little more closely at improvements, the district's advanced plans to improve its building with an eye toward a new middle school. How do you find those plans?
Pretty thorough, very well put together. I've actually tried to give them to other individuals to kind of look at who've been complaining about the prices that it may cost to build a new middle school. It's just needed. If you think of how long that school building has been there and what it takes to, to update it, it would be cost more to update that building than it would to actually build a new building.
We have a referendum on the April ballot. The city does. How do you feel about putting one for the school district on the November ballot?
I think waiting till November may be better off for us with this big one coming up in April. I'd be definitely okay with it. It doesn't hurt to ask and see where we can go forward from there.
And if the referendum fails, then what? Or it doesn't get on the ballot?
Right, or it doesn't get on the ballot. We look at our other options. There, there's more than one way to skin a fish, right? Isn't that what they say? So, maybe there's other ways we can get around this, or maybe we can get donors. It's always a way of figuring it out. So, um, maybe there's other ways we can get around this or maybe we can get donors. It's always a way of figuring it out.
The district has set a goal to increase enrollment. How do you think that could best be achieved?
I think we have a great enrollment process already. We get a lot of individuals from different school districts to begin with. I personally know of many families that come from Madison just to bring their kids to our school district. So just a word of mouth right now has been great in showing that, um, we have a great district and increasing our test scores just shows that. Keeping our teachers and how, how great they speak of their students in their schools helps with that as well. So just word of mouth and, and really pushing it forward.
Indeed. Now, the district has a goal of exceeding expectations on the state school report card. What do you see, what do you think needs to happen to achieve that?
Well, what we do with Olivia, who is going to be taking her forward tests here in the, in the future. It's a lot of prepping and letting them know they can do it and a lot of, you know, just, just letting them know that they, they've already got this set forth for them. It's what they've been learning all year long and they can do it. They just have to put their mind and their, their skills towards it.
Indeed. Communication with stakeholders. How do you feel the district's been doing? Does it communicate well often?
I think for the most part, we've been doing okay, but there's always a need for improvement. If you've ever sat on a, um, tabletop exercise or done a live exercise, which we do throughout the hospital a lot, the main thing they always focus on is improvement and communication. So it's not one place, it's everywhere. We just need to work on how we can get that out there and, um, really set forth our goals and our mission and our vision to let them, let the city, let the public know that we're here for them and they need to take steps forward to being engaged with us as well.
COVID nineteen. A lot of steps have been taken to mitigate its spread. It's been a subject of great contention uh, within the district as well as the rest of the world. How do you feel the district handled it?
I think for the most part, they handled it very well. We have school nurses in every single school that, um, that touches the area. So that's great. They've been really wonderful in helping to make sure we stop the spread. Obviously contact tracing has been really hard because of the populations that, uh, the school has and the amount of people they touch. There are a couple of things I think could have went better is watching the surges that had happened. I know we had taken away masks about two days before Christmas break and maybe extending that a little bit towards after break would have been more helpful, just because families were getting together during that time. And maybe setting forth like if there's this, or if the community's seen this much of a spread, we need to go back to masking. Or if the community's seeing this much of a spread, we need to be concerned with closing down classrooms or, um, better chances of learning online. Cause I know Olivia has been, my daughter went third grade. She's been home a couple of times due to contact exposures. And they don't, after the second half of school, they don't do online learning anymore. So then it kind of sets you back a little bit. So just really maybe focusing more on how we could have kept those kids more engaged and stopped the spread a little bit better.
Teach your attention. Not just here, everywhere. It's a problem. How do you think the district is doing to keep its teachers, attract more teachers and what do you think else could be done?
Yeah. I think the fact that we are such a great school district is a big part in keeping our teachers around and the longevity of those individuals. I think we could do better by having, um, more appreciation for those teachers by showing such. I know we said, I said on the party PTO as well, and what they do is they do a monthly teacher appreciation day where they just walk around and give like we did a soda and chips day and then just give them thank you cards or they sent home piece, pieces of paper with their students to just write one thing that they really loved about the class and what their teachers are doing for them. Appreciation goes a long way and I know, um, a lot has been learned during this pandemic of how much we appreciate our teachers and the staff at the schools. I think we just need to show it a little bit better.
Indeed. What do you think the district does very well? And one thing that could perhaps use a little more attention?
Yeah. So I think they do, um, work together very well. I, the, the whole vision of one fort is true, I think, with Fort Atkinson. Um, and the whole school districts, a, a good example being Purdy had a fire not that long ago. And I keep running back to Purdy because that's my main example of what I've seen go on, but they had a fir, a fire back in their building not that long ago and, um, Luther opened up their doors and just let them in because it's that mi, that mindset of we're just one fort. We just need to make sure that our kids are safe and that they're learning and they're doing what they need to do to make sure that they can move forward and be, um, productive. One thing again, better would probably just be communication and how we do it and keep it, um, consistent. You know, sometimes we get emails, sometimes we get things sent home, sometimes we just miss meetings in general. Whether it be a board meeting or a PTO meeting, um, and just maybe just keep consistency so that maybe more people can show up.
Should you be elected? Where would you excel that first meeting and where would you, uh, what would you find challenging?
I would excel. I sit on a lot of boards currently. I actually sit on the board of health for Jefferson County. I sit on the local emergency planning committee. And I sit on, um, a group called Schweherk, which is the South Central, um, Hospital Emergency Coordination. So I think assets being that I work really well with mult, a multitude of individuals and making sure that we work together to get to our things accomplished. Um, our tasks accomplished and the word out and all of, um, stuff together so that our students and teachers and everybody else is on board. What might be hard is, um, I don't know. It could be a magnitude of things. It would definitely be, um, probably balancing work life and school board, you know, um, I do have two kids. I have one in third grade, one a two year old. Uh, the two year old's very much a mama's boy, which actually being on the board might help because maybe then he would have to split from me a little bit. But, um, I think that would be the biggest challenge was just finding a way to separate everything, especially because we're still in a pandemic and my life job is infection prevention. So that takes over my whole life.
Thank you, Sam. Would you like to make a closing statement?
Yeah, um, I'm very thankful for this opportunity to speak with, um, everybody and show, show you how, who I am and what I'm all about. I appreciate everybody's time in getting this together. This is great. April fifth is going to come real fast and there are four great candidates. So any one of us would be a great fit on that school board.
And Sam, thank you for joining us at our forum and good luck in April.
Thank you so much.
We are here with challenger Matt Loop. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you, Michael.
And can we have your opening statement, please?
I am impressed with the quality of education provided by Fort Atkinson Public Schools and by the relationship between the district and the community. I believe that when schools, families and citizens work together, we can better advocate for students. Keeping them engaged, motivated and successful. The quality and breadth of the education our children receive today is important for the future success of our society. It is our most important investment. That investment must be prudent as a community's resources are not unlimited. I would like to help the district craft policy, craft policies that benefit students of all backgrounds, abilities and interests and work with district officials to continue careful stewardship of taxpayer funds. When my wife and I first came to Fort Atkinson, pride in its public schools was evident. That well-founded pride was a major reason for us to choose this as our new home. As a member of Heart of the City, which is a nonprofit community service group, I met administrators and staff who were working to make our district buildings more environmentally and financially sustainable. When my son entered a public school system, I volunteered at his elementary school, helping with the learning fair and the school garden. I worked with a middle school teacher who devoted her after school time and energy to a robotics program. I've seen art and music classes, display their talents at community events, making this a more vibrant place to live. As a U ten commissioner for FAZA, that's a soccer organization for youth, I was impressed by the parent coaches dedication. They showed incredible enthusiasm and were invaluable in helping grow youth soccer in Fort Atkinson. I also appreciated the support provided by the district in giving a place for children to practice and compete. Through these volunteer experiences, I found that community involvement is crucial to a district's success. A district's success increases a community's strength and children come to every situation eager to learn. They just need a district and community willing to support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Let's start with a big one. What do you see as the biggest issues facing the school district today?
Well, um, there are several interrelated issues that, that sort of feed into the, the primary function of a public school, public schools are of course to educate our children. And there are several issues that, that feed into that. A lot of the, a lot of those issues have been highlighted in the last two years, um, with the switch to, uh, virtual learning and then hybrid and then back to in-person. There was some learning loss, um, and there were, there were some other sort of psychosocial issues that, that, uh, that were highlighted, uh, over the last couple of years. And as students return, we found, uh, that there, there are new challenges. And, uh, I think our teachers have met the, the, the difficulties admirably. And they, they need our support. They deserve our thanks. The children definitely deserve our support and that includes not just, uh, educationally, but also, uh, in mental health, so, uh, school nurses, social workers, that sort of thing. And that all requires funding. Uh, the, the school district received some ESSER funding, which is a, a sort of an emergency relief funds to, to deal with the, uh, uh, issues brought up, um, by the pandemic. And the district is working very hard to figure out where that, those monies would, would make the biggest difference. I think that, I think they're doing a good job with that. It will take some time to recover some of this learning loss. But I, I have confidence in our district's ability.
Thank you, Matt. Financing and budgets. Looking ahead, if elected, how would you guide the district's budget? And make decisions about future operational and capital improvements spending?
Well, um, I think that, that our, our financial services office is, uh, incredibly vigilant. Making sure that our money is, uh, that our district's money is spent well. The incre, well, the, uh, unpredictability, I think, of, of, uh, federal and state funds over the last decade or so has really made their job a lot more difficult. But they do their best to, uh, project, uh, um, into the future, what they might expect by way of funding. I know, um, over the la, last, the last school year, that's, uh, twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, um, they had a surplus and that had a lot to do with, uh, students not being in building. So I think that, that of the approximately forty million dollars in, in, uh, annual budget, somewhere just north of eighty percent is for, uh, wages and benefits. And I think that's right, that, that, uh, the, the most money in the district goes to our, our teachers and staff. They're, they're really doing the good work. You know, then the remainder goes for maintenance and, and supplies and that sort of thing. I think that, I think that it's a solid budget and I, I feel confident every three years when the district presents it to the community for a referendum. I, I think also, as I mentioned, the ESSER funds, I think it's important that, uh, we make sure that that, that goes to, uh, programs that will, will benefit all students across the board.
Could I ask you, there's a referendum, excuse me, on the April ballot. Do you think bringing a referendum by the school district in November for a new middle school might, uh, not be a good idea?
Well, I know, I know that the public safety, safety referendum is, is a sizable, sizable ask of the community. And, um, I know that, that the district is in the planning stages for, uh, the middle school referendum. I think they're doing a good job, uh, reaching out to the community, getting some feedback, uh, showing, showing the middle school and offering listening sessions. If, if the district thinks that it would be better to wait, I would support that. If, if, if the district does, does have a November, November referendum, um, and that fails, there's always another opportunity to come back to the citizens. It's, it's a sizable referendum and I think that, uh, that, uh, that we should be, be asking, uh, for, for the referendum for, for new building. As, as that middle school ages, the maintenance costs become greater and greater. And I, the buildings ground staff were, uh, telling us at the, at the latest, at the last, uh, public tour of the middle school that, that when maintenance costs become more than fifty percent of cost of new building, then it really doesn't make any sense to continue putting money into that. I know that they, uh, they are saving a little bit of money, uh, by closing the pool. Pool is no longer safe at the middle school. The, and the HVAC systems are coming to the end of their, uh, useful life, um, wouldn't want to have to replace something in an old building like that. Although, uh, some years ago, uh, through referendum, they funded, uh, some, uh, geothermal and you might remember that. And, uh, and the payback on that was, uh, quicker than they expected. So I think there again, the district is, uh, doing a good job, being good stewards of taxpayer money. So, uh, short answer is, um, I think that it is important for the school district to present their idea for a new building, uh, to the public. I wouldn't want them to rush that. If, if they're, if they think that it is feasible to do it in November, I would support that. If the community is not yet ready to fund that middle school, I, I would support bringing another referendum in another year.
In addition to the new middle school, uh, the district's advanced plans to improve most of its buildings. How's that look?
Well, I thi, I think it looks, uh, really good. Um, as I said in my opening statement, when I, uh, in Heart of the City had, uh, met some administrators and staff, uh, that were working to make the buildings more environmentally and financially sustainable. I think those really go hand in hand. I mean, as I said, and as I said, the business service offices, uh, do a fantastic job of, of forecasting what a budget might be. And, and, and their, their projections are much more consistent than say, uh, fossil fuel prices these days. And I think that, that, uh, with, you know, increased, uh, heating costs, the, the initial large investment in, uh, geothermal and alternative sorts of energy and energy efficiencies was, uh, very smart decision. It's really paid off, saved, uh, saved, uh, Fort Atkinson taxpayers a lot of money. I, I feel that the buildings and grounds, uh, staff at the, at the school are, are doing, uh, very good job in, in, in stewardship of, of their money. Anecdote, when we were at the middle school touring, the, the, uh, janitor, the custodial staff at the middle school were describing how they've, they've saved some money on, uh, this particular sort of wax that they use to encapsulate some asbestos in the floors at the middle school. That's how old the, the middle school is. And, and they figured out a way to do it cost effectively. Keep everything moving. Um, so I think, you know, from the planning to, to the, the procurement to the, the, the staff labor is, I think they do a fantastic job with that.
Back to the referendum, as it fails, uh, how would you develop alternatives?
Well, I, I think that, that with, with any, any project of that scale, um, there are a lot of items that, that, uh, are necessary. There are a lot of items that would be nice. Um, I wasn't here for the referendum for the, the new high school, but I understand there were some compromises made, um, and to, to, to give a, a good budget for that. And I think that, that we'll have to do that, but, but we should keep an eye on, on what sort of, what sort of compromises are made. We don't want to compromise quality or, uh, or future viability of that building. I think that, uh, that in addition to being cost effective in the near term, one should, uh, a district should plan for any buildings to be sustainable and, uh, and, uh, and plan for longevity.
The district has set a goal. The district has set a goal to bring all of its buildings to the level of exceeds expectations. Um, what do you think needs to happen to achieve that?
Well, it is, it is a lofty goal. Um, and, uh, regardless of your feelings about the, uh, metric used by the state to determine, uh, uh, you know, academic performance across the, or across, across districts. Um, it is, it is a, a sort of level playing field. And, uh, I think that, that the district has done a good job of, uh, maintaining that, that, that level. Um, I am impressed with their holistic approach to achieving this, uh, uh, exceeds, uh, exceeds, uh, expectations, um, by implementing a program across, across schools, from elementary to middle school to high school, that they have a sort of continuum of learning. And what is happening at the high school informs what's happening at the middle school, informs what's happening at the elementary, and, and then back up to the, from primaries to secondary. Um, I, I also am impressed with, uh, the, the teams that they formed in each, uh, discipline, English or science, math. Um, so they can communicate more effectively and see what's working in small, small.
And, uh, would you like to make a closing statement?
Well, I have a, I have a brief closing statement. Um, that, uh, thanks for the opportunity, uh, and, uh, thanks to Fort Atkinson Online. Thank you, Mr. Klisch. Um, also, I am thankful for the commitment shown by district teachers and staff, as well as support for our schools from citizens. And I hope to bring an attitude of openness and gratitude to the school board. School board members should be open to citizens' concerns and receptive to new ideas. We all must respect each other's opinions and work to achieve consensus, if not unanimity. Disagreement shouldn't end our discussions, because we're all in this together. Thank you.
And Matt, thank you for attending our forum. Good luck, April fifth.
Well, thank you.
That concludes our twenty twenty-two School District of Fort Atkinson Board of Education Candidates Forum. We hope you found your time with us and the candidates interesting and informative. We'd like to thank our sponsors, nonpartisan and nonprofit groups, the Hord Historical Museum, and the American Association of University Women, and The Bridge, located next to Good to Go. I'm Michael Klisch. Thank you for watching, and please vote April fifth.